So I'm starting to record it already. Well, she's doing the public work. Can she transmit the phone so I can pick it up on the first ring?
You pressed the button when we forwarded it to Melissa a few times.
Oh, yeah, you could use underneath the thing. Do that. Set it, have her set it up for that. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Maybe it's just my computer, but when I went into the agenda and I opened it up, it looks like it's cut off on the right side for the Committee of the Whole. And I just want to know if you also have that issue.
The agenda online?
Yeah, yeah. The one linked on the bottom. I mean, I don't think it's that big of a deal, but I just want to make sure it's not like that. I mean, I printed the Public Works Agenda and it wasn't like that. I don't...
Are you getting it through WebEx or is this...
No, it's through the, our agenda, you know, with the...
Oh, okay.
But you know what? It's showing up fine on my computer screen. So I would, it must be my printer, so don't even worry about it.
Okay.
I'm not, I'll have to fix mine.
Yeah, because I'm showing it all on the screen.
Oh, yeah, the scale is 130, that's why.
Okay. Good morning, Amy.
How are you?
I'm good. Just a reminder, we have a Public Works meeting first, so...
I'm trying to keep checking in. I'm filling in for Karen to keep hoping to meet in case she's not here.
Okay, ninin' out there, but hopefully we'll be spending time at... Pardon me, Maura?
You said Ken. I think you were talking about the Committee of the Whole, but we're starting the first committee at nine, right?
Right, right, but Amy is on for the Committee of the Whole, so I just wanted to clarify that with her.
Got it, got it. I'm going to mind my own business.
Hey, hey, no problem.
Good morning, Beth.
Good morning, Joe. How are you today?
I'm good, thank you. How are you doing?
I'm good, I'm good.
Good. I just wanted to make sure that I was online and ready to go.
Good. You are the first I've seen for the Board members, so hopefully... Pardon me?
Well, I am the chairman. I probably should be first.
Well, there you go, there you go.
All right, well, I'll just...
Okay. I was saying, by the time everybody really gets good and comfortable with this, we'll probably go back to, you know, having meetings in person about the time, you know.
Yeah, I know. Isn't that something? And I noticed getting on these websites or WebEx is a lot easier now. It's working out smooth.
Yes, yes. Hopefully, we've gotten out all the kinks.
Right.
Good morning, Joe, Beth.
Good morning, Jeff.
Hi, Jeff. How are you?
All is good, you?
I'm good, very good. Hey, Jeff?
Yep.
Can, uh, can I make a phone call to you later after this, maybe? And we'll talk about Marshall Road.
Yeah, that's the email yesterday that your boy just responded to.
Yeah, I just want to see what, how the county can get involved or if they need to be, but I'll talk to you later about it.
Okay.
Thanks.
And Jeff?
Good morning, Maura. How many of these meetings have we done now, like 50?
Um, I think we're getting up there, maybe Baker's dozen.
Yeah.
Joe, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear everybody, yep.
Oh, okay. I wanted to say hi. I didn't, I didn't know if you heard me.
Yeah, I did. Hi, Maura.
Hi. That's all.
Okay. You know, yesterday I had to run a meeting for the Forest Reserve, and I, this is my first one, um, so I went to the Sugar Creek just to make sure that everything was dialed in. So I'm actually by myself today to see if I can handle it, yeah.
It's not, I can, I'm, I can do basic troubleshooting, but, you know...
Just keeping up with the, you know, you do a great job by letting us know about the hand raised, because, uh...
Yeah.
It's kind of a lot for us to be doing, looking for all that stuff.
Totally, yes. And, um, yeah, I'll, usually too, I'll, and I should have talked to you ahead of time, um, just talk to the chair and make sure they want me to do that and, you know...
That, and, um, you obviously know when someone's not speaking, just if you can just mute them, because I know we have issues with the...
Beth, I, can we do that?
Yes, I was doing that Tuesday. If I watch that, Joe, so that if somebody does not turn their mic off, I will, I will turn it off, yeah. I, I don't see that I can put the hand down. I asked Mike Shea to check on that.
Yeah.
I was supposed to, if I would have that access, and I don't think he got an answer on that. But, um, at least I do have the capability of turning a microphone on and off.
Okay.
Joe, Beth and I are like...
Where's the hand button?
What?
Where's the hand button in the row of buttons you can push?
Okay, let me, so, do you have a side, a thing on your right-hand side, Mark, that has a list of the panelists?
Uh, right-hand side, no.
Okay, go down to the, um, right under the seal of the, um, PowerPoint, and do you see there's like five or six buttons that, there's a microphone?
Yeah, microphone, a camera.
In the middle, there's a little person. Do you see that?
Yeah.
Okay, click on that person.
Okay.
Okay, now, what should have popped up is a list that says participants.
Yeah, it did.
Do you see that?
Yes.
Okay, so if you look down at the last participant, you have, Beth, can you put yourself on mute?
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, so then, my last person on there is Amy Chavez. Is that you too?
No, mine goes all the way down to Margaret Tyson on the bottom.
Okay, now, under Margaret's name, hi, Margaret, um...
Good morning.
Okay, I see the hand.
You see a hand? Just press it, and press it.
Okay.
And then, um, let me see, I'll double check that your hand is raised. You, someone else can see.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, your hand is raised, and then, you know, you can, I think, hover over that hand to unraise it.
Okay.
And actually, you can, you can't hover over it. You just have to click it again down at the bottom right.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
I just, I think that's part of the introductory thing that I missed, because I couldn't get in that day. I mean, I could get video, I could get video, but I couldn't hear what was going on, so I didn't know how that worked exactly.
Yeah, so your hand is up right now.
Okay.
So just go to your name and, um, or go to the bottom and click the hand.
Okay.
There. Oh, that's, okay, Mike, Mike's doing it. Okay, good, you're good, Mark.
I just, I was just waving, that's all.
Oh, hi.
My little hand.
Okay, got you. Thanks.
No problem. I think there's a, um, let's just see. Ray put, yeah, there's a funny face that you can, a laughter face that you can put up.
I discovered yesterday that when I use the whiteboard feature, everyone sees it.
That's something interesting to discover by surprise.
It was. Luckily, I only drew a heart.
I don't know how to clear now my smiley face.
Hit the hand, hit the hand again, and then hit the hand off, and it'll take off the smiley face.
Got it, thank you.
Hey, Maura?
Yeah?
Um, when I pull up, I hit the little guy down here at the bottom, and I see the names, and so it comes right in the middle of my screen. So in order for me to find the, somebody raising their hand, I want that off to the side maybe, so I can try to help.
Yeah, go up in the right-hand corner of the participants. It should be like directly to the right, there's, you know, where you can X out.
Okay.
And then, um, hold on a second, because I just Xed myself right out of the participants. Um, you should be able to, if you click on the panel, are you using an iPad?
Yep.
Okay, um, you should be able, that's a touchscreen, right?
It is.
Just as you can move like a screen around on your screen, um, or a window, just, I think you can pretend it's like a window, and you can, oh, you know what? Hold on a minute. Directly to the left of the word participants, um, are the choices of how you view your screen. Do you see that?
Uh, no.
Okay, um... Uh, so you've got your participants up, but your problem is they're in the middle of the screen.
Yeah.
And are they, like, is it a small box, Joe?
It's, it takes up a third of it, the middle third.
Okay, and so, when you click on the top bar, meaning like where it says participants?
Yep.
And, and hold it down, can you move it?
Like, no, I can't.
Hmm.
It's, it's not a huge deal. I just thought I could help, uh, keep an eye on these hands. Otherwise, if you...
I'm on it.
Okay.
I'm on it.
Okay.
Hey, Joe, this is, uh, Jason. Do you have a view...
Good morning, J...
Good morning. Do you have a view, uh, menu item at the top?
Um, I have a, I have like a little camera icon.
Okay. Is this on iPad or is this on a computer?
It's on an iPad.
Okay, that might be why we're, why that is showing up, because I, I did one for my iPad, uh, as a test earlier in the week or last week, and, uh, um, it is on the bottom. Let me see if there's a way to, to move that, I don't know if there is.
It really isn't a huge issue. I just thought I could help more looking for hands and stuff.
Yeah.
By the time, like, we said, by the time we get it all figured out, we'll be back to meeting in person.
I, I hope so.
Good morning, everyone. This is Meta.
Hi, Meta.
Good morning. Uh, Jason, could you give Jim Eustace a call? He's got a message of some sort. He can't get in. If I give you the office number, he's at the township.
Yeah, you want to email to me, and I will take care of it.
I can just, I'll tell you right now, if you don't mind, just jotting it down. It's, it's, uh, 469-4907. It's 815 area.
All right, I'll give him a call.
Thank you.
Looks like we have, just for your reference, Joe, 19, um, panelists on, and in total, 27 people.
Hi, Meta. Hi, Denise.
Okay, Maura, um, yeah, whenever it's past nine, do we want to give some people a chance to get on still? Just let me know when you guys think we're ready.
Yeah, maybe give it another couple minutes.
Yeah, if we can see if Jim gets on, and then the only other one on the committee is Ken Harris.
Uh, Ken, no question.
We're gonna, I know, we're gonna give him a call and just see if he's gonna come on. Maybe he's, yes, please. We're gonna give him a call.
I can text him if you guys don't have time for it.
Um, Lana's gonna call him right now. Thank you.
Looks like we're just missing, uh, Jim Eustace from the actual committee.
And Ken. Don't see Ken, Ken Harris on either. Lana's leaving him a voicemail, Maura. I don't know if you want to maybe text him if he'll... Thank you. Okay.
Hi, Ken, how are you?
How are you doing today?
Trying. Are you having trouble?
No, I got it okay today.
Okay, I could resend the, oh, you got the link, okay. No problem. I'll let everyone know that you're in the process. Just kidding. Okay, thanks, Kenny. Bye-bye.
Okay, Ken is trying to log in right now. He was tied up on another call, and I know Jason was contacting Jim to get him still.
You guys hear Steve Bowers?
Yep, I've got you, Steve. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, I'm trying to make sure my, I don't talk today.
You do sound like you're in a fishbowl, though.
Well, that figures.
Are you?
Good morning, everybody. This is Judy.
Good morning, Judy.
Nice to see everybody.
We haven't seen you since yesterday.
I know. Been a long time. I've been, I'm giving a different view of my, um, my family room where I'm sitting.
Your camera's not on, Judy.
Oh.
So you're, you're being, uh, undercover.
Oh, my gosh, it says it can't connect. Hmm, well, I guess I'm undercover today. I don't know what the hell... Oh, wait, wait, let me go down here and look. Oh, there I am. Hmm. Hang on. Standby. I think I'm coming up now. Maybe.
So Beth, is this, uh, link going to be the same for the Committee of the Whole, or are we going to go to a different link?
Nope, it's the same link, same link.
So land use is on a different one, though?
Land use on Tuesday will be a different one, separate from the legislative one.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, I see Ken is on.
All right.
So if we can just give Jim another minute to see.
Dick, you want to sing a song while we're waiting?
No.
Yes, yes, let's do that. Mike, you lead.
I'm the background singer. I'm not the lead singer.
Was this somebody's birthday?
When I was little, my grandma used to sing "The Wheels on the Bus Go Round and Round", and, you know, it's the transportation meeting, so I think that would be perfect.
Oh, yeah, this is a good idea.
That is a good idea.
I don't know about Mike, because I'm singing, but he's a hell of a good dancer.
Well, he can put his video on, and he can do it in front of the dance while the rest of us sing.
I'm actually, I'm actually dancing right now, but I have my camera up as I'm having a batting. Everybody.
My camera's still not working.
Um, Judy, do you want some...
I think I'm going to leave the meeting and come back, because it was, I'll, I'll be back.
Okay.
Did you click, start, share my video?
Yes, but it doesn't want to. It's going to lose it. I'll, I'll be coming back.
Ray, if you're singing, I want to hear your helicopter voice.
Oh, no. No, 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 no.
Maybe we could do like a county board bonding night, where we all go do, um, karaoke together.
I sit really well, it's a rising sun.
Steve, I can totally see that.
I've heard it. You don't want to be part of that.
I'll tell in the background, that's what I think.
Joe, I think that in the essence of keeping, trying to keep the... Joe, I think that in the essence of keeping, trying to keep the meeting on time, that we should probably go ahead and start because you do have a everybody but Jim now, I believe, so hopefully Jason can get him logged on, especially since we have the other meeting coming up.
We valid and Ronaldson mute themselves.
All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I would like to call the Will County Public Works and Transportation Committee meeting on May 7th, 2020 at 9:11 a.m. A little disclaimer here, in accordance with the executive order 2020-18 issued by Governor Pritzker, this meeting will be held via video conference telephonically through the WebEx Events Platform. Will County Board members will be attending the meeting remotely and the general public is strongly encouraged to do the same. The public is invited to comment or pose a question by email at publiccomment@willcountyillinois.com. At the public comments portion of the meeting, the emails will be read into the record. Please go to www.willcountyboard.com backslash meetings for a link to attend the meeting via WebEx. Ken, in a week, call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Colin?
Here, sorry.
Ferry?
Here.
Gould?
Here.
Kara?
Here.
Mustis, you're on just in time. Thank you. Mueller? Metta was on, wasn't she?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Tummanello?
Here.
Ben Tyson?
Here.
And Van Dine, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ronaldson, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible,
Thank you, Jeff. We have no old business on the agenda, so moving into new business. We have nine resolutions to consider this morning, starting with number one. Confirming award of contract to PT Farrell Construction Company, $473,548.39 led on April 15th, 2020 for Weber Road, County Highway 88, from Gaskin Drive to north of Airport Road Overlay, County Board District Number Three and Thirteen.
Who'd I'm, Mustis?
Well, second by Chris.
I can.
Second by Tyson, District Three.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Number two, confirming award of contract to Austin Tyler Construction Incorporated, $474,984.06 Homer Road District Overlay on various roads, County Board District Seven.
Who'd I'm, Mustis?
Second Mueller.
First and second, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Number three, confirming award of contract to Austin Tyler Construction Incorporated, $139,301.40 for New Lennox Road District Overlay on various roads, County Board District Number Twelve.
So move, Tummanello.
Tummanello?
I can.
Tyson?
Second Tyson. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Number four, authorizing approval of professional services agreement for design engineering services, second phase with V3 companies on Cedar Road, County Highway Four, from Francis Road, County Highway-
Move, Tummanello.
Tummanello, move.
Second, Mustis.
Mustis, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Number five, authorizing approval of professional services agreement for design engineering services, second phase with Willett, Hoffman and Associates on Willett and Tieton Road, the bridge over Fort Creek, County Board District Number Six.
Moved, Gould.
Gould.
Second Mueller.
Mueller, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Number six, authorizing IGA between the Village of Plainfield and the County of Will for maintenance and energy of traffic signals at the intersection of Renwick Road and Village Boulevard, County Board District Five and Thirteen.
Motion Ferry.
Ferry?
Second Mueller.
Mueller. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, resolution to correct Shriver's error on Resolution 19-273 for condemnation cases regarding the county's improvements of Leraway Road from Stonebridge Drive to Cedar Road, County Board District Twelve.
So move, Tummanello.
Tummanello?
Second Tyson.
Tyson, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, authorizing approval of professional services agreement for design engineering services with WSP for Eastern Will County Truck Route, County Board District One.
Who'd I'm, Mustis?
Second Ferry.
Second Ferry.
This is Judy. I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead Judy.
So I would, I was just wondering, because it wasn't clear to me from our meeting yesterday, with the MFT funds, if we have the money available for all, but this is like a brand-new project. The other ones are projects we've had on and planned. This is a new project, so this is about a million dollars. Do we feel confident that we will have the motor fuel funds to go forward with this project? I wanted to ask.
Yes, Judy, it's Jeff. We are confident that we have the money available for that or for the course of our multi-year plan, which we'll be discussing next month. We'll be showing there how it all fits together, even if there's a shortfall this year. We have a couple of big projects that did not move forward this year because of court cases that are ongoing. So that much will carry over and it will just get absorbed into the new multi-year plan, so the funding should be there.
Okay, I just really wanted to verify that because this is new and I know we have some other financial issues, so I was curious. So, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you Judy. We have a first and a second, I believe, on number eight. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Then number nine, authorizing design engineering services by county under the Illinois Highway Code for Eastern Will County Truck Route using MFT funds, $930,603.40, County Board District One.
Who'd I'm, Mustis?
Second Ferry.
Second.
You have first and second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving on to other new business, Mr. Ronaldson, do you have a discussion?
Yes, actually I have a couple items that want to bring your attention. Good morning, everyone. Nice to see you.
Morning.
Morning.
As I just mentioned about the multi-year plan, I will be bringing that forward to you next month. Whether it's in person or not, we'll do our best. It's just a presentation of it. Then you'll have the month to really go over it and then I'll have the public hearing the following month. So next month, we'll see our multi-year plan. I also do have answers to the impact questions you asked last year or last couple of months ago, but we'll talk about them next month. Permit ordinance will be ready for next month. And then lastly, we did get this week the first installment of the bond sales, for the local bond sales that the local agencies are supposed to get. So that's $3.10 million, almost $4 million, came in this month. They are still saying okay, six installments, two a year for three years. We'll see if that actually holds true, but at least the first installment is in place. That's all I have.
I have a question, Jeff.
Okay, well, if you could submit an impact-
Beth, can I interrupt for a second? Beth, will you please mute?
I'm sorry.
Okay, Jim, you had a question, I think, for Jeff?
Jeff, I think this kind of is an extension of Judy's question about funding. I do think it's important, maybe, that you explain to the board that, you know, our funding, that we do have money that's already funding these projects. I mean, it's been reserved for prior tax years, either the RTA or whatever, motor fuel tax and so forth. It's, it's, it's going forward, say, to the next year or even to the year after that. So would you, would you agree with that? I mean, anything that's on this year has basically been funded by prior revenues. It's, it's maybe re-looking at the five-year plan and looking to see if some things get bumped off. Now, some of it naturally happens because we're just not ready, but maybe you can go into a little more depth about that and how budgets are funded from what years.
Sure, absolutely. This year's budget was based on certain revenues expected to come in, which, as we all know, will be decreased by, who knows, fifteen, twenty, thirty percent. Nobody can really say at this point. So the budget did anticipate those revenues, however, the budget also utilized funds we had on hand that were built up from other projects. So we have more money in the bank, I guess you would say, than we were anticipating spending this year because of projects that did not move forward in the schedule we anticipated them to do. Like a couple of them, Leraway and Cedar, for instance, is almost a $10 million project. It's not going to go this year because of right-of-way. So, I mean, right there, you have more than enough to cover anything else that's planned for this year. So we're gonna budget that project for next year and go from there. But anything that's shortfall, like I mentioned before, will be absorbed into each multi-year plan that we do every year. So if we don't have the money at the end of the five-year plan for a project we're expecting to do, it will just have to wait another year.
I guess that's a, so will we be revisiting, say, the five-year plan, once you know what the revenues might be?
Well, we typically do the multi-year plan this month annually. We're gonna wait till next month. But even next month, we're really not gonna see what the receipts are because I got the March allotments, which came in April, that actually showed we received more money in that March allotment than we have in any other year prior. So that tells you that the effect wasn't felt yet. The receipts are probably from January or February. So it could be a couple more months before we even see that. So we will probably move forward with the multi-year plan, expecting things to be somewhat statusful or even maybe a percentage for a year, twenty percent maybe reduction in one year. Let's correct up in the next annual revision, like I said, but we will have money in the bank already to cover what we're planning to do.
From what I'm hearing, I think that we could probably figure about a twenty percent reduction in revenue with motor fuel and RTA tax, maybe even a little more in motor fuel. We could still do a plan based on twenty percent reduction. I would hate to, if you're gonna wait till you see the numbers, I think we wouldn't be doing the plan until, until next year. We would just be waiting. So can, can we just go forward looking at maybe, you know, a twenty percent reduction in revenue?
Yeah, we can move forward with anticipating twenty percent less for, say, a year and it'll all fall down.
What do you think, Joe? I mean, I think you should probably sit down with Jeff and maybe work out a number. I guess that's the question that you-
Yeah, Jim, that's a, I think it's an excellent idea. I do meet with Jeff the last, I meet with him once a month and we discuss all these things. It's been, obviously, kind of hard the last couple of months, but I think it's a great idea. Jeff and I can sit down and involve our speaker and come up with a plan. I am getting the hang of looking at this website and finding the hands raised, so take your hand down, Jim, and I got Judy and I got Mike Frizzalone, so let's start with Judy first.
Thanks. I have another question, Jeff. I was just curious, our staff that is in the highway department, are they all out working? What's the status with that? I know you're not on our committee as a whole. If you could just give us a real fast. I do see the guys, of course, I live in a county road, as you know, so I do see the guys running up and down the road once in a while. So I just wanted to give us an update if the, if the virus has impacted your department at all.
Yeah, the maintenance department is actually out in full force. We are a hundred percent staffed as far, from May 1, we went to full staff. So you will see all of us out there. They are remaining socially distant as much as possible. There are a few things, obviously, they can't, and then they'll have to wear the masks, of course. For the most part, our operations can be pretty well spaced apart, one person per truck as much as possible. Again, not always possible. So they're out there. Before that, we had our zone supervisors driving the roads every single day, looking for road hindrances or safety concerns, and then we would call out, we went to half cruise before that on call. So they would come out if something was necessary, essential. But now the backlog of things has gotten to such a degree, we need to have everybody out there. So they're out there. My administrative staff is a lot remote. The field engineers are out on the jobs and contracts. I say I got five out of the nineteen in the office, usually nineteen, but we're down to five because most are remote, rotating some people. So business as usual. Business never stopped. Permits are ongoing. Projects are ongoing. That's the short of it.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to know. I know that the, that we were, I wasn't seeing them for a while and then I've begun seeing them the last couple of weeks. So, all right, thank you.
Okay, thanks Judy. I have Mike Frizzalone and then Nick Palmer next.
Hey Jeff, on the, on the Will County gas tax, when does, when did that kick in?
They started collecting in February. I have not yet seen on their website. The receipts have not come in yet. So I don't have any information as to where we fall. But they must have like a three-month lag behind or something because it's, it's still not up.
And we didn't, we didn't budget that in, right?
Not for this year, but we're going to budget for next year an amount that we're collecting this year.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is if we, if we start collecting this year, can we appropriate that to make up the difference, even though that'll be down too relative for these couple of months? Hopefully, it picks back up if we ever get open, but we'll have that money to work with, which theoretically, we'd be able to keep our regular projects without accelerating them on pace.
Well, we can't use any of that kind of option motor fuel tax this year because it wasn't in the budget.
Yeah.
We will include it in next year's budget.
All right, so we may, even with, even with our loss, we may be able to keep the pace of projects that we already had planned without accelerating if we take too much of a hit overall.
Yeah, all our projects planned for this year and even next year, we're gonna, we're moving forward without any delay.
Okay.
In regard to right-of-way or something, that's a totally different issue, but funding-wise, whatever's available, we-
Okay.
I'm sorry, Nick Palmer?
Joe, I was just gonna reiterate what kind of what Mike said is that with the new gas tax and as we all know, we budget pretty conservatively here in Will County. I mean, we always have more money in the motor fuel and the RTA than we're spending on an annual basis, pretty much. We, Jeff budgets for all those projects, but as he already said, they get delayed sometimes and pushed to the next year. So I think in the short term, I think it's good to be proactive. I agree with Mr. Mustis as far as planning, but I don't think, my guess is, we're gonna be negatively impacted in the short term and it's just more readjusting in next year's budget, which we're starting that process right now. So I think we're gonna be okay, but I just wanted to say that, so.
I'm not hearing you, I'm not hearing you, Joe. Am I the only one not hearing you?
I'm sorry. All right, come on now. Uh, Mike and Jim, you have your hand up. Do you have another question?
Yeah, actually, is, is Mary Tatro on the line?
I did not.
Uh, no, I do not see Mary. Phil Mock was supposed to be on, but I do not see him. I will contact him and see.
Okay, well, the question I really want to ask, and, and Amanda Cook is following up on this, and that's where does the, the fuel tax only applies to retail gas? You know, we had, uh, one of the businesses in my area, Cooper, who basically, as I believe, uh, diesel fuel or heating fuel, actually, uh, whether he needs, uh, somebody told me he needed to pay that tax. I was just going to ask Mary to clarify that. Only, only, the tax only goes on retail gas sales, correct? Jeff, do you know?
That has been the question that's been raised, and I have not heard a definitive answer on that myself, but.
Uh, yeah.
If I could, excuse me, and we do have Phil on, but I'm not sure if I can, I want to, this is new to me as far as trying to... Phil, is this you?
Um, I am on the.
Oh, we started to hear him and.
I'm.
I hear him.
Called in on the phone line.
You can hear him.
My computer doesn't have a microphone. Do you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, Phil.
That, uh, looked into that issue, Jim, and, uh, we only apply it to, uh, retail sales, not to wholesale. We double-checked that and sent out the information yesterday.
So, we can definitively say that we only apply it to retail sales, correct?
Correct, it's only for retail sales. It's right in our ordinance text, retail.
Okay, all right, tha- thanks, Phil.
Sure.
Jim, Jim, there was, it, like Phil said, there was a email, um, sent out, I believe, yesterday that explained that. You might, maybe you didn't get it just yet.
I, I seen it, but I want, I wanted to make sure that, uh, because I thought the email didn't say, but I did see it, but I just wanted to follow up on that.
Beth, could you leave it yourself, please?
I'm sorry, I keep forgetting.
No problem.
Okay, um, is there any other questions for Mr. Ronaldson? Uh, okay, let's move on to State's Attorney. Phil, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Very good. Uh, the monthly work reports were provided. Is there any questions from any of the board members? All right. Public comment? Has there been any public that wanted to speak today? Beth?
No, we have not received any public comments, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, if, I could just make a mention, if you can, Goby, I can approve the minutes. I don't believe they were approved at the beginning of the agenda. It's okay, Joe, it's the minutes from March fifth.
That is. Yeah, can, can we get on a, a motion in a second for the, to approve the minutes of March fifth, twenty twenty nine?
Make the motion to approve the minutes to Menalo.
Second, second, fair.
First and second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Beth. Um, we'll skip back down to, any reports by the committee members? Does anyone from the committee have anything to add? I see no hands.
Nick Palmer has his hand up. Obviously, he's not on the committee, but I don't know if that's an accident or...
Nick?
Sorry, I didn't take it down. I'll take it down, I'm sorry.
All right, I see no.
My arms are getting tired.
Uh, Chairman's Report. The, the only thing I would like to mention, if any of you have driven, uh, through the construction on Briggs Street, um, I know the committee a couple of months ago, and it might, it might have been Mr. Frizzalone's idea, um, but we had some signs made up, and I took a picture of it, and it says, uh, in front of the construction on both ends, "Funding and Oversight of This Project by Will County, the Will County DOT. Your tax dollars at work," so.
Nice, very nice.
I wanted to mention that. I can send a picture, or maybe we can.
Right on.
Do something with it, but I was, uh, very, very impressed, and it, it looks really sharp, and I think it sends a good message, so I wanted to congratulate the committee for getting those signs and, uh, having them installed, so thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, send a picture, Jeff.
After you shall receive. Send out an email, thanks.
If you can give me a picture, I'll send it out to the, to the board, Joe.
Will do.
Other than that, um, I have nothing else. We have no executive session, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to Menalo.
Use the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Our next scheduled meeting will be June fourth, twenty twenty. We are adjourned. Thank you.
We'll start at ten o'clock on the same channel.
Yeah, so you can just mute it and walk away, turn your video off if you want for twenty minutes or whatever.
Don't forget to mute your phones.
Hello? Yeah? Mute my phone? Okay. Yes, yeah, I got it, okay. Well...
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm looking for, Amanda's having trouble getting into the meeting. Her email's not authorized, it says.
Okay, we will get someone to call her. Thanks, madam.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Kirk, we can hear you.
Okay.
And now I can see you.
Oh, now I'm on? Okay, all right.
And mute yourself again.
Jill Van Dye, are you on?
So, Mark, just so you know, and Denise, we've got 42 participants right now. 35 panelists who are people that can speak, and then we've got several attendees, including some press and some, looks like some public on the line. I just want to remind everyone again to mute your video, or I mean mute your volume button while you're not speaking. That's really helpful. Does anybody have any questions before we begin? I'm just going to take a look at how many board members we have on, Denise and Mark, and then I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marah. Thanks for your help earlier, too.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. This is our committee of the whole. We're back on the screen again, so we're kind of getting used to this now. Got to, we want to take a break through before we get started. We'll call, first of all, we'll call it to order. We'll call, Denise, somebody is not muted. We need people to mute. Is that you, Beth?
No, no, I am muted.
Okay, and you have all the others muted?
Now it's way better.
Okay. All right. So, everyone can hear me, I'm sure. Trying to get the gallery view up on my screen, but it's not coming up, so on either one of my screens here. We'll see, we'll just go with this. Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the pledge. Ray, would you lead us, please?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
United States of America.
Tutor, Polit, Republic of Canada, and the nation under God, indivisible, and in heaven.
Thank you. Okay, just a couple of things before we get started, a couple of housekeeping things before we move into the agenda for this meeting.
Denise, if, excuse me, if I can do a roll call real quick, just to make sure who all we have.
Thank you.
Farley?
Here.
Frisalone?
Here.
Newquist? Sherry, are you here? O'Gala?
Here.
Amanda Cook, I know is trying to get on. Moustace?
Here.
Rice? Tyson? Margaret, are you here?
I saw her on the list.
I saw, thank you. Harris?
Here.
Trainier?
Present.
Fritz? Mueller?
Here.
Gould? Van Dye? Is Joe here still? No, he's not. Okay. Bellage?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Parker? Annette? Annette, are you there?
I see her.
Thank you. Okay. Ventura? Dallinger?
I'm here.
Merkum? Berkowitz?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Suminello?
Here.
Weigel?
Here.
Krelitis? And Winfrey?
Thank you.
You have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so as, before we get started, just a couple of things. First of all, I know a number of you have been concerned about Larry, how he's doing, and wondering when you'll get to see him. He is going through a particularly rough patch right now, so I'm asking everyone to lift him and his family up in prayer, if you would, please. Hopefully, we'll see him again soon, but he's not able to join us today.
Denise?
Yes.
This is Judy. Could the girl send out his address to our email, and then we could all send a card?
Yes, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
This committee of the whole is about COVID-19. Along that line, we have ordered cloth masks for everyone here, two for each person, so each of you will have two cloth masks in your mailbox. You can pick them up at your discretion, or if you need to do something different than that, you can let staff know, and they'll make the arrangements for that. The way that we're going to do the committee of the whole today is that we'll hold all the questions until the very end, so each department, each department head, each elected official will give you an update on what they are doing with respect to COVID-19 in their department. That's the only thing we're doing on the call today, and I'll give the, the role of who starts first. We are going to mute all the mics except the person who is speaking. So if you have questions, you can either write them down, put them in the chat, or whatever, and at the end of all the updates, we'll do the questions. A question before we go into that? Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, Beth. Okay, so we'll start out, and the first one will be, somebody is not muted. The first will be the chief judge, or Roger, whichever one of you would like to speak to us about what's, what you're doing at the courthouse.
Speaker, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Judge. Thank you.
You're very welcome, and thank you for, for doing this. I do have an update. I'll try to make it as brief as I can, but there is a lot going on. My order on limiting services and court access is extended through May 29th, and is, of course, subject to further extension. We are planning now for a resumption of many court services effective June 1st, but again, that's certainly subject to change. Even with a resumption in services, there will be a significant transition period in that all courtrooms will be open at once. Starting May 11th, this Monday, we are opening one additional felony courtroom and one additional misdemeanor courtroom, both for uncontested matters. We need to start addressing the inevitable backlog. Civil and family have begun to handle many cases on video platforms. We all have to remember, our courtrooms are public, and we are also working with the clerk's office to establish public access on video, including platforms such as YouTube. I am currently planning for all employees to be back before the end of May, although, once again, that's subject to change. Although planning for the return of jury trials, I will not be implementing startup for at least several weeks, if not months, especially in the civil division. I am requiring facial coverings and masks, so both, not just one or the other, by everyone at all times while they're in the courthouse, with the exception of employees that would be in their own offices, or judges, lawyers, and witnesses who need to make a clear record during a court appearance. I have been and will continue to work with county executive's office and the county board, while those branches of government continue to help me provide resources, especially to assist us in keeping all court facilities clean and disinfected. My thanks go out then, big time, for your help. Also, my thanks to staff and maintenance for keeping things clean over here. It's been a challenge, but we're working on it, and as we open more courtrooms, we will continue to need more resources. I met with Kathy Henderson this morning, and we had a great planning session on how we're going to move forward, so my thanks to Kathy and all those people as well. And with that, that was my update. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Judge. Next up, we have Chuck Squires on from the clerk's office. Did you want to say anything? Yeah. Okay.
Maybe we skip him and move to the next one.
Chuck? No? Yeah? Okay, so then next up, we have the Clerk, Lawrence Daily Ferry, on the line.
Good morning, Speaker. County Board, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. I'll be brief. Don't have much of an update. We are still closed to the public here at the Clerk's Office, except for one day a week on Mondays when we issue marriage licenses. We've been super busy with that. We see about 20 couples every Monday, so we've got about 40 people coming into the office on Mondays. We are booked all the way through July, so we are considering possibly adding another day to that, but we are going to discuss that, just because we still want to obviously limit the people that are coming into the office, but there clearly is a need. But otherwise, we are handling all of our vital records requests via email, online, or by phone, so mailing those out. We have had a few people, you know, request some emergency documents, and we've been able to meet them in the parking lot and make that exchange that way. But otherwise, we are having our office deep cleaned as well this week, so that's been wonderful. My staff is back fully, unless they have a reason to be at home. We have a few people with, somebody with like a heart condition, and someone that's taking care of their not-well father, so those folks are still home, but for the most part, our staff is all back. We have them check in with their supervisors every morning to make sure that they are feeling okay and well. If they can't social distance in the office, then they do wear masks. Everybody that comes into the public has to wear a mask when they're in. That's pretty much it. We are, you know, business as usual here, without the exception of obviously seeing the public except for marriage licenses. So, any questions?
We'll take the questions at the very end, Lauren.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Amy Chavez for the Recorder's Office. Amy?
Hello?
I know she was on there.
Yeah, yes.
My unmute wasn't working, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm here on behalf of Karen this morning. She had an emergency at home, so she wasn't able to be here. The update on the Recorder's Office, to recap, we are still closed to the public and continue to have our staff split in half and working in the office on a rotating weekly basis. Since our last update, we have had one employee that tested positive for COVID-19 and is currently still out of the office. I am happy to report, though, that they are doing well and awaiting their ability to return to work. With that being said, we're going to continue with our current scheduling process, at least through the end of the month, and we will readdress that as we get closer. We're also working with the County Maintenance Department to get our public counters set up with plexiglass and barriers to protect the staff and the public once we do reopen, and we are continuing to social distance and have the face coverings that were provided by the county to be used as required or needed. And that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Okay, next up, we have Duffy Blackburn, the auditor. Did you get on?
I don't believe he's on yet.
Okay, we'll come back to him then. Okay, Rhonda from the Assessor's Office?
Good morning, Speaker, and good morning, County Board members. The report from my office is, I'm trying to make it short, but it is a little lengthy. We have about 80% of our employees back. The other 20% will be back on May 18th. We are using masks in the office. Everyone wears a mask. Our office is still closed to the public. The renewal applications for all of the exemptions, that's a number of about 25,000. We thought that there was going to be legislation to roll those over, and sadly, it looks like that is not going to happen, so we are mailing those applications on May 29th. We worked with the State's Attorney's Office to eliminate the requirement for a notary, and we have been able to come up with language that the applicant can use by a signature called a certification verification. We worked with Phil Mac on that. That's huge for those people that are going to renew, so that they don't need to leave their house. Most of them, well, they're seniors, disabled persons, and disabled veterans, so we're encouraging mailing of the form. I will be coming to you on the agenda for the 14th, for the Executive Committee, to request that the date of July 1st be extended to November 1st for the filings. Statute calls for that. We are going to use the plexiglass stations. We are going to open our office to the public June 1st. We have worked with maintenance and the County Executive's Office, along with the Treasurer and the County Clerk. We are probably going to have lines. Somehow, we're going to try to keep the lines six feet from the lines that the Treasurer would have, and find a way to allow these people to come, you know, upstairs or to the elevator. We haven't, you know, that's going to kind of be one of those things where, once it starts, we're going to have to figure that out a little bit. I think that's pretty much everything, unless there are some questions.
Okay. Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Tim Brofey from the Treasurer's Office.
Good morning, Madam Speaker and County Board members. The Treasurer's Office is open for business Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, as per statutes. We have a temporary counter in place near the door, and we'll have new windows installed left and right of the front door for this season collections. Myself and five supervisors are in the office daily, plus two others occasionally for payroll and reconcili, bank reconciliation. Five are at home answering phones, and two are telecommuting, two others are telecommuting as they are able to. Payments are coming in, seems to be similar to 2019, for the first four days, anyway, and the $120 million in CARE Act funds have been received and are invested in a portfolio earning approximately 1.8%. That is my report.
Thank you, Tim. We have Anthony Marzano.
Good morning, everyone. Will County 911 continues to be fully mission capable. We've still been in telework status since March 17th. We're scheduled to continue in that status until June 1st, reevaluating as we go. We've continued essential maintenance activities, with staff performing work at physical facilities when needed. We completed respiratory protection and personal protective equipment policies and corresponding training with our staff as of last month. We currently have appropriate levels of PPE to continue performing our missions effectively. We have one employee, as of earlier this week, on voluntary self-isolation due to close contact exposure with a known positive individual. Their spouse recently became ill after contracting COVID-19 in their workplace, and subsequently tested positive, so that employee has been instructed to self-isolate and not come into the office for any reason. But again, this employee has been in telework status and has not been in the office since the week prior, so we're not concerned about any exposure to other 911 personnel. We employed best practices after that notification. We disinfected common surfaces in the office, anyway. Door handles, countertops, bathroom surfaces, workroom surfaces, and so that has been done. Those are, those are the only things I really have to update you on. We appreciate the opportunity to give you the update.
Thank you, Anthony. Duffy, are you on yet?
Denise, I do not see that he has been able to get on. Can you ask him just to email it, and we'll send that out?
Okay, and speaking of that, we have a number of people who have sent over reports already. Those are attached. We have attached Records Management Report, Public Defender's Office, Workforce Services, and FEMA have all been sent over. We'll ask Duffy to do that as well. I believe I have Mick Palmer on from the County Executive's Office.
Good morning, everyone. A lot of the folks on this call have already participated or heard this, but we have regular meetings with the countywide officials and their staff and department heads, just as a clearing house for information, get updates from our Health Department, and try to prioritize any issues. The County Board leadership and the County Executive's Office are participating in regular meetings with collar county leaders in Cook County, just on best practices, kind of issues they're dealing with. Some of those include return-to-work policies, what people are doing with property taxes, and PPE supplies. The county has been able to secure a number of PPE materials, so we have distributed to all staff, as Speaker Winfrey mentioned, the cloth masks. We've given everybody two of those. We also have a large supply of surgical masks, which are the paper masks, and we're making those available at the front doors and here at the County Building and at other buildings where needed, and we've secured things like gloves. Gowns are still a problem for the, where those are needed, but we continue to stay on that, and as we go to more full, open buildings, I think the masks are going to be very important, because I think, your guess is as good as mine, but masks are probably going to be something we're going to be wearing for a while. As far as the cleaning, I've told people before, we have done the quote-unquote "deep cleaning" at Health Department in Sunny Hill. We've worked with the County Clerk's Office to do a version of that. Not all. Our facilities are obviously one size fits all, so some we're going to have to be creative or just do different things, because they have different operations, but we are planning to do that. We've worked with the Treasurer and others on plans for the property tax collection. Some of that has taken shape with the signs and stanchions, and we will continue to streamline that as we get people coming in. And then the last thing we're working on is the CARES money, which we'll be talking more with the Board on, as far as how that's allocated among county folks, and whether we go beyond that to local governments, which is very much their interest, is municipalities and other local governments and agencies are interested in whether they can apply for some of that money. So, we'll talk more about that, I'm sure, another time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Sue Olenek is on the line. Okay, then we will go to Dave Dubois. Dubois?
Good morning, Speaker and Board members. You know, I do have some updates. I also want to provide you some numbers, just to give an example and illustrate kind of the operations of the department, as how it compares to prior years as well, particularly with building permits. Since Governor Pritzker's order on March 20th, we've maintained normal business operations with just a few exceptions through a combination of in-office employees, those working remotely, and also those in the field. And although we have restricted access, we have maintained normal business hours and are accessible to customers during that time. And again, the health and safety of our employees has been top priority, and we've been able to continue business through the effective use of the department's Smart Gov web portal, web mail, VPN access, cell phones, cellular-enabled iPads in the field, and also WebEx for meetings. Smart Gov is available to customers 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, and for those customers that cannot transact business online, we do accept drop-offs and secure location in the department. Now, with regard to some numbers, Development Services Division, again, has provided building, zoning, and engineering-related services, and everything's being provided in a timely manner. Since March 23rd, we've received 441 building permit applications. We've issued 260 building permits and performed 618 inspections. You know, upwards of over 3,000 emails have been transacted as well. With regard to percentages on inspections performed, we're actually over last year's same period for inspections, at 104%. Permits issued, we're at 91% of last year, and the permits submitted, we're at 87%. So, we're down a little bit, you know, between 10% and 13% in those respects. So, you know, our department is, you know, very important to, you know, our local economy and keeping, you know, the trades working and things going, as well as the homeowners. With our RNE Division, we've continued outreach activities for COVID Day, or, excuse me, for Birthday and COVID-19 effects on waste recycling events. There's spring collection events have been canceled or postponed for obvious reasons. There's new IGA for electronic recycling and process, and some other outreach. We've been continuing our energy efficiency activities at the EDF, as well as the County Building with IT, continued work on CPACE agreement, as well as the landfill RNG plant design, and our staff has also been out in the field and has been inspecting 39 unpermitted sites and 25 permitted sites. And again, over 700 phone calls and 7,000 emails that that department's been working on. The Community Development Division's been working with, the continuum of CARE and the Health Department, you know, made to find alternative, alternate housing, emergency housing, and food for homeless, for those impacted by the COVID-19. The work related to that includes completing an application cycle for receipt of funding request for 3.2 million for CDBG home and ESG programs, for program year 2020, continuing the inclusion of funding request for the 1.2 million in emergency CDBG and ESG funding from the CARES Act, preparing courting for the Visory Board and County Board to facilitate through review of funding applications for the program year 2020 and the CARES Act grant applications. So, they've also been very busy with the code enforcement as well. 74 cases opened. So, that being said, we are working on a plan right now for return to office by our employees. It's going to include options for phasing, addressing installation of physical improvements in the office, or sneeze guards, other, you know, options, too, as clean desk and office policies, and also looking at technologies to help facilitate, you know, perhaps social distancing, and, you know, perhaps some people continue having to work remotely for some time. In summary, again, we have maintained business operations, and we are placing, anticipating, working on this anticipated phasing for the return of the office. But one thing I really want to make a point on is that, you know, the POS report that I am providing with the work the department's been doing would not be possible without the hard work of our dedicated employees. I would like to thank them for their work during this difficult time, especially when they have to manage the stress and anxiety of dealing with perhaps the issues that they have at home that are related to this. And, again, I just want to give credit to our employees for keeping things moving. So, thank you.
Thank you, David. I see Sue Olenek is on now. Are you ready for your update?
Denise, I can, I'll call Sue and find out. I see Duffy was able to get on, if you want, to see if he can
Okay.
speak on his update.
Let's go to him first, then. Duffy? You'll need to unmute yourself, Duffy.
Yeah, he's a panelist, so he should be able. Duffy, can you try speaking? Oh, you were just promoted, Duffy.
Does he have a microphone on his computer, though? Is that maybe what the issue is?
Do you have a microphone, Duffy? Have you done other video conferences on his computer? We can't.
We can sort that offline, so while he's
Yeah, I'll call him.
Get that out. We will go to, Dale Santorelli is on from the Sheriff's Department.
Actually, Denise, the sheriff, I believe, is on, but we need to just promote him. Dale could give an update on the jail, but the sheriff and the undersheriff are on, and I believe we're going to try and promote them from an attendee.
If I can try and work on that, but Sue Olenek is available, I believe. Sue, are you there?
We'll go to Sue, then.
Sue, your microphone is off. Okay, we just talked to her. All right, let me see if I can... Oh. Sue, are you there?
Okay, we're sorting that out. Jeff, can I believe it?
I think I have, I got promoted now, so I have audio, I believe.
Okay. Who am I speaking to?
This is Duffy Black.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Duffy.
Good morning, Denise.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Denise. First, I want to say thank you to all the IT staff and Beth Adams and Lana for getting me on here. Good work. So, I appreciate that. Thank you for giving me a chance to join you guys. I just want to give you an update on what I had communicated last week. As the Otter's Office conducts the continuous audit of the county payments, the system data has shown an increase of expenditure, new activity, an increase in procurement card spending, and a surge of new vendors that the county has made purchases with. Since April 15th, we've had close to a half a million dollar of new spending on the procurement cards. We have 76 new vendors, and we have, you know, 10,000 checks being paid. So, I believe it's important to momentarily increase the individuals' offices, controls for prevention and detection, for misstatements, errors, and fraud risks associated with this increase in activity, the adverse circumstances, and employees, vendors, or any other related parties that come under intense pressure at this time. So, the Otter's Office will be emailing a list and a guideline for the evaluation and assessment for recent purchases. We will send this to the offices and/or the authorized signers or purchase approval roles in each department. Essentially, we'd like you to review this list as an additional step. Again, I want to say thank you to the staff of the combined accounting personnel throughout the county, all the payroll staff, all the accounting clerks, all the receiving clerks, and all of the different accounting, and the 200-plus users of the financial system. I want to say thank you to the financial, Finance Department, because they've had under, they've been under more stress, the Treasurer's Office, the IT Department, and everyone. We've had no late bills. All of the county payments have been audited, but with, again, these adverse circumstances, we'd like to make sure that we have just a few more eyeballs on it. So, I appreciate the extra effort. And if there are any questions from anyone in the county, please feel free to respond to the forthcoming emails that you'll be receiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Duffy. I believe that, Beth, is Sue on the line now?
I don't. I'm thinking that this is going to be... Hold on one moment, I think we have Sheriff now.
Okay.
Is this the Sheriff's Office that I have unmuted?
I'm unmuted now. This is UnderSheriff Konzer.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. The only updates we have are that we put everything out of March 16th, that when we changed with the Governor's Order, too, that was implemented. Everything we have is put out on, as press releases, on the Will County Sheriff.org website. If anybody has questions, be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you. And I believe Mike Kelly is also on.
I'm not aware of that.
I think they were together.
Together, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know if, did, I had, I know Gordon Santorelli was on, I don't know if he was giving a separate, if there was anything he was...
No, Dale is not going to give anything separate. Everything we have is put out as press releases.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is Jeff Ronaldson on?
Yes, I am, Denise.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I don't believe I've talked to everyone in the past, so I'll just give a brief review of where we've been. On our maintenance side, before May 1, we were on a rotational basis, half crews. Our supervisors were living in the grounds every single day, making sure if there were hazards on the roadway or something essential that needed to take care of, they would call in the maintenance crews as necessary. But on May 1, given the workload is increasing in morning season, I have called all of them back in as of May 1, so we are full force for the maintenance side. I have split the shifts as far as start and stop signs at Joliet, because it is a bigger facility, two crews reporting, so that adjustment has been made to minimize overlap, but otherwise all the maintenance is reporting. Administration Engineering, all services have been ongoing ever since the beginning. With the help of IT, we've had a lot of remote work being done, which has been really great. We've been able to minimize our staff, even through the month of May, I'm anticipating only about five people in the office at a time out of 19, so that's really been good. All of our project management, permitting, utilities, overweights, they're all done remotely, so all of our work is proceeding as normal. Field Engineers, they're out there watching the construction projects that we have going on, obviously being socially distanced with the contractors, but construction is in full force. If you're driving around, you can see plenty of contractors out there doing work, so that has not slowed down. There are a few people in the offices, I mentioned, that are rotating in and out, but even when they rotate, they're working remotely. I do also want to mention that while we have minimal public interaction at this office, those that do come in, we do allow them to show up, but we have an enclosed entryway, so the inner door is closed, so they can communicate through a sliding door, so that's not really a factor for us, for those who are in the office. So, we're set up well for that. Just to let them know that I've been communicating weekly with the other Coller County county engineers, just to make sure we're all kind of understanding what everyone is doing, if there's any other things that are good to do, making sure we're doing the best that we can for the motoring public. So, that's been a good conversation to have lately. And then, as far as COVID in the office, we, at this point, keep your fingers crossed, we have had no COVID positive cases of that nature as of yet, but the county has been good at getting everyone prepared should those instances occur. As I said, everything is moving forward, all projects are moving forward, weddings are happening, interviews are happening with consultants through video, which has been really good. So, at the end, if there are any other questions, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you, Jeff. I also have an update here from the Coroner's Office. The update is that there are no changes significantly in their department since the last time, when we had the committee of the whole, and there was an update. So, no changes in the Coroner's Department. Bruce Tidwell is on the line. Did you want to say anything?
Yes, good morning. I wanted to let everyone know that we continue to operate on a rotating schedule, full-time, and then work from home on alternate days. We continue to timely process payroll, so everybody's getting their paychecks. Benefits are continued to be administered, work comp claims, we're still continuing to work on regular HR compliance issues, labor relations, we're working with all departments on COVID-related issues, we're hearing grievances with the union via WebEx, we're seeing employments in person on an appointment-only basis, and we continue to be here to service all of the county.
Hey, thank you, Bruce. Beth, is Sue on?
I'm going to see if this is her. Sue, is this your... Sue, is this you? I don't see.
Duke Squires is on.
I'm here.
Oh, wait, there's Sue. There's Sue.
Okay, go ahead, Sue, please.
Okay, I'm sorry for all the technical difficulties.
We're all having trouble. Go ahead.
Okay, so, as you, as you know, this week and next week, we are moving into our new building. It's going very well. The allotted time for each division that we thought we would need has been shortened. For example, we thought we would need about three days for behavioral health, they were done in a day and a half. The moving company that was contracted has done a great job, they've been very easy to work with, very efficient, so that's where it really helped. The staff absolutely, positively love the building. It's just, it's amazing, so thank you again so much. As far as the operations are going, administration is back fully. We have all of our staff onsite and working. Fortunately, the way admin is set up, we all have separate suites for, like, finance and EPNR and my office, so we're able to, not only socially distance, but also, you know, we're able to work closely but socially distant, and it's working well. We are requiring, by the way, all staff to be wearing face masks, they are required to wear them. If you're in your office and you're by yourself, you don't have to wear one, but if you're out in the common areas, you are required. In environmental health...
I don't know who's typing, but could you please stop? It's hard to hear, Sue.
In environmental health, some of our staff have returned. They're getting our laboratory up and running, they're still trying to, they were still trying to run some water samples in the old laboratory. We have changed some tasks for our sanitarians. They are now assisting with contact tracing. They were here, well, they're going to be here sporadically throughout the week, an additional six to seven sanitarians will be added to our CD staff to do the contact tracing. Typically, our CD staff is comprised of a program coordinator, three investigators, and a medical secretary. We brought in seven additional nurses from that same division that had been cross-trained, some just got just-in-time training, and so we added seven nurses over the last couple of weeks. Now, we are adding another six or seven sanitarians. So, as you know, the initiatives by the State of Illinois is to increase and continue to increase the testing across the state, and of course, that will require increase in contact tracing, so we need more people to do that. And the environmental health staff are, you know, fielding complaints in regards to social distancing, or any of the Governor's EO orders. They're also working in collaboration with the OAG's office if there are workplace complaints and investigations that need to be done as well. In behavioral health, most of the staff are continuing to work remote, and some of them will continue to work remotely on an ongoing basis, at least for the near future, but so far, things have been going pretty smoothly in behavioral health, and we've, we've actually seen some of our numbers improve, so we're going to be looking at that as a continuous option. In the community health center, they're operating the same as they have been over the last several weeks, you know, they continue to operate as a primary care center. The dental services are not operating unless it's an emergency or a serious health issue that needs to be addressed. The mobile unit is going out three times a week, and they are testing, they're doing the actual PCR testing, the, you know, nasopharyngeal swab testing at congregate sites throughout the county. They have a schedule of probably 12 sites that they're going to over the next couple of weeks, and they want to continue to do this through June. So, they're reaching out to all kinds of congregate sites throughout the county. Initially, a lot of their contacts had been in Joliet, but they will be going throughout the county. They collect anywhere from 60 to 80 specimens in a day. The Illinois Department of Public Health is providing the test kits, and they're also coming and picking up the specimens and taking it to their labs. So, they're really making this pretty easy for us, and since we don't have the same number of patients coming into the community health center, we have enough staffing to go out into the field and, you know, conduct the testing, so that's, that's going well. Family Health Services, about half of the staff are back. Of course, that's the division that has the contact tracing and, you know, the CD department, so a lot is having to do with that. We will be having all staff back at the campus as of May 18th. We will be working through that week, kind of bringing people back in with some return-to-work conditions, with some modification of conditions and that sort of thing, and then we will be asking and welcoming the public back into our new building on Tuesday, May 26th, after the Memorial Day weekend. In terms of CARES funding and funding that is available to us, we've been aggressive in seeking that out. The Community Health Center applied for $783,000 worth of CARES funding. The budget went out, I believe, the day before yesterday, so we are requesting that, I'm sorry, $793,098.5, looking at the budget. Agency-wide, we applied for $280,000, that's in addition to the $793, and that's for all of our activities, responding to COVID, our emergency operations team, et cetera. Right now, Behavioral Health is writing for a grant for their department to be able to access some of that CARES funding as well. I don't have a number on that, so we are aggressively trying to go after whatever funds we can. As you know, the Governor announced Restore Illinois a couple of days ago at his press conference. That has been the subject of the webinars and the training that we have been receiving from IDPH ever since then. Earlier this morning, I was on a webinar with Dr. Dufus, who is Duhas, Dufas, I don't know, I'm sorry. He is the doctor in charge of the contact tracing for IDPH. And we had a webinar on how the contact tracing was going to take place, very specific, and working collaboratively with IDPH. I'll be meeting with my CD coordinator either tomorrow or early next week, just to see how we are staffing-wise and to see, you know, to make sure we can meet the demand and meet the expectations of IDPH on their contact tracing requirements. In case you didn't hear, as far as the numbers, as of yesterday, Illinois has 68,232 cases with 2,974 deaths. Will County has 3,364 cases with 189 deaths. As of yesterday, within that previous 24 hours, the State Health Department had processed almost 15,000 specimens. Their capacity is about 20,000, so we've been seeing anywhere between 12 and 18,000 dollars, I'm sorry, 12 and 18,000 specimens being processed daily, so that's, that's a good thing. The total number of specimens as of yesterday, processed at those three state labs, was 361,260. So, they really are serious about the increased testing and contact tracing. And, you know, just, I guess as a frame of reference, you know, the, the contact tracing and the testing is going to tell them a lot of information. The thought here is that there were a lot of people who were infected that were asymptomatic, they didn't have any symptoms, or they didn't have the classic symptoms that we were seeing. So, they want to do this testing, the antibody testing, once they get a validated, accurate antibody testing, that's going to be a game changer as well. So, I sent the whole document of Restore Illinois to the County Board yesterday, and for your viewing, so you didn't have to hunt for it. Hopefully, that can give you a lot of information and, you know, kind of walk you through what the process will be. My hunch in the beginning about us being into COVID through winter is probably, it is, that's the way it's going to be. Right now, we're moving from our initial response phase into our contact tracing and enforcement phase, and then, once we get a vaccine, hopefully in fall or early winter, we'll probably be going into the vaccination phase. I've also been working with my peers at IDPH, or, I'm sorry, in NIFIC, the Coller Counties, you know, Kane, Lake, Kendall, DuPage, Cook, Henry, et cetera. And what we're trying to do is come up with a strategy for the vaccination... And what we're trying to do is come up with a strategy for the vaccination process. One of the things that we are all in total agreement in is trying to get our community doctors involved. In 2009, we did the H1N1 inoculations. We inoculated 25,000 people throughout the county. We're gonna need a whole lot more people vaccinated. I think the demand is gonna be much higher for COVID, so we really need to get our community doctors engaged and involved. Some of them honestly just kinda washed their hands of the whole COVID thing. They weren't seeing patients with respiratory issues or symptoms related to COVID. They were just telling their patients to go to the health department or go to the health center, and they really need to be part of the solution. So, we're gonna come up with a strategy to engage the community doctors early on and really let them know how important it is for them to be part of the solution here, so hopefully that will be successful. Continue to, you know, get guidance. Oh, I know, one other thing I can mention to you. I am sending out letters today, they're here for my signature, to all of the legislators in Illinois that have districts in Will County. There's a House bill that is going to be up for discussion. It's sponsored by Robin Gable. It's House Bill 4150. This House bill will, is requesting additional funding for the local health protection grant. Our local health protection grant is a little less than a half a million dollars, which really doesn't go very far at all for what that grant requires us to do. The funding was increased just ever so slightly. I'm talking by a few thousand dollars a couple of years ago, and then prior to that, it had not been increased for over a decade. So, we're requesting that in light of our need for response in the pandemic and in light of our need moving forward to, again, assist IDPH being the boots on the ground in many facets of this. And just ongoing, the importance of public health, we're requesting additional funding, so that's something that we're working on as well. Those, these letters will go out later today. I think that's it for now. I'm sure there's more, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Sue. You've covered a lot of ground. A couple of questions have been raised around mental health and depression, and what kind of funding or provisions are being made for that?
Yes, that is part of why we're requesting additional funding. You know, the whole idea when we got into the new building was to ramp up an addictions department in behavioral health. It was something we had several years ago, and because of budget cuts and horrible funding from state funders, we were unable to keep that addictions program. We'd like to ramp it back up. It'll be done slowly, but I think that, you know, this is gonna require that even more. We have been putting out, you know, just some kind of gentle information on our social media and website about the need to have, you know, good mental health in these kinds of times as well, but we haven't seen a huge spike in issues. As a matter of fact, our mobile crisis response is down overall, so I don't know, it's been a little bit unpredictable, but certainly, we're looking to get some additional funding for whatever we need to address, what we will be addressing in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe we've hit all the department heads that were wanting to speak or who didn't already send a report over. Is there a department head or an elected official that I missed?
Denise, would I be able to speak now? Hello?
Who? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. I tried you before and I couldn't get you on. Go ahead.
Yep, sorry about that. I had a problem with my microphone, but real quickly, our staffing, we're, about half of our management coming in, slightly less of the bargaining unit coming in. We have, thank God, had no COVID cases. We are trying to take care as far as cleaning up around the windows, the front public areas regularly. I wanna thank Kathy Henderson. She has been excellent to deal with as far as getting supplies and helping us. Right now, we are in the process of getting a lot of notices out, continuing some of the cases for the last two weeks of May, and then also, we'll be sending out notices to do some of the matters through Zoom. So, we're increasing our use of Zoom. Some of the judges have already used it for pre-trials and agreed matters, and we anticipate going forward, there will be more extensive use of Zoom, as we have some large court calls that are coming up in June and especially in July. We are also looking at distancing in areas like the outer courts. We have a conference call next week, I believe Monday, with some of the local prosecutors and the facility managers for those. Those would be like Frankfurt, Wilmington, Bolingbrook, so we are going to be discussing that going forward. As far as our regular things that are going on, we're getting really ramped up for the new courthouse. We have a lot of deliveries coming into the new courthouse later this month for computer equipment, scanners, and so on, so we're trying to juggle everything from an IT perspective. And we're also trying to think a little bit as far as getting more staff in as we get further along. I'm guessing next week, we're already planning on bringing in more staff, and we will have pretty much all of our management back towards the end of the month. Right now, they're on that one-day-on, one-day-off type schedule, but it's actually three days on, three days off. So, if anyone has any questions, that's pretty much going on with the clerk's office. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chuck. Did I miss anyone else? Okay, so now we will open it up for questions, if there are any. The reports have been pretty extensive, but any questions related to COVID-19?
I have a question, Madam Speaker.
Ray?
Yes, thank you very much. Sue, you know, I've been sitting here like everybody else, you know, kinda dissecting some of this stuff. I'm hearing a lot from our residents. I know a lot of you have been hearing probably phone calls, getting phone calls, and they're upset, or they don't understand because of the mixed messaging. You know, you have different messages coming out of different areas of the country, different area messages coming out of different sections of our own state. The biggest issue that I have is that when I look at the positivity rate between the four sections of Illinois, three of them are extremely low, one's like 5%, two of them are like 11%, and one's like 19 to 22%, which hovers right in that area of we're not gonna get to Phase 3. And a lot of it has to do with the density. When we look at the density of Chicago, I wanna say it's like 11,000 or 12,000 people per square mile, where in Will County, it's only about 800 people per square mile. You know, so, I mean, Chicago's 1,300% more dense than Will County. At this point, I think we're helping to bring their number down, but they're putting us in a position where I don't think we're going to get out of that, under that 20% range with them attached to us. I think we only make up less than 5% of the cases. They make up about 70% of the cases. I would respectfully ask if there's a way that Will County could ask the governor if we could be lumped in a different region or removed, because I don't really believe that what's happening in the northeast region is reflective of what's happening in Will County. And that's my concern, is that we're gonna get prolonged, and our residents are gonna have prolonged suffering. They're doing a great job, and our numbers are well below. So, if we just took our numbers by themselves, we are under the parameters to get to Phase 3. We would be in Phase 3, but now being that we're lumped in the northeast section, I'm concerned that we're gonna get this dragged on. That's my concern.
Can I respond? I have my hand up for a while. I don't know if you saw it, but I wanna...
Please, please, please.
Yeah.
We left Sue in for that.
Would you please wait until I call on you? Sue is gonna answer Ray's concern first.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Ray, you're absolutely right. That is a concern of mine as well. When they determined these regions, they did them within the same region lines as the state EMS system. And even on the calls and whatnot that I've been on, you know, admittedly, they have said that, you know, there isn't a perfect way to do this. There isn't a, you know, your next-door neighbor could be, you know, in terms of, you know, counties, your next-door neighbor could be very different from you are, but this is what we have. But in addition, they also said that, you know, moving forward, you know, they're going to continue to look at it, and they are gonna have metrics, that we can go on the DPH website and look at the metrics. And I am, I am not, I'm very much willing to go to the governor and ask the governor for some kind of consideration if, in fact, you know, we are, you know, the region who, or the county that is able to meet those metrics, but we're being kind of, for lack of a better term, dragged down by the rest of the region. So, I'm not opposed to, you know, putting my hand up on that one.
I appreciate that greatly, I really do, because I, and I look at even like Grundy County, for instance, I think they got less than 1/10 to 1%. They only have 40 cases, and they're getting dragged in too, and I just think it's unfair for the residents of both counties. But to go back to what you just said about the metrics, that is exactly where I pulled the metrics off of, of the Illinois Department of Health website when I was reviewing this, because, you know, there are so many facts out there, so much fear, and when their own facts support the fact that Will County would be able to be further progressed, I mean, that's the reason I brought this up. I think it's a good move, and I think it would be wise for Will County to do that if we can confirm that we're in a position to do that, so, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, the governor all along has been saying that, you know, science is driving his decisions and, you know, data and whatnot, and, you know, to me, this is a perfect example of what we can go back with and say, hey, here's the data, here's the science.
Absolutely.
What do you think?
Absolutely. It's the proof's in the, the numbers don't lie, and the numbers are well within the parameters of allowing us to progress to the next phase, so I'm really hoping that he could take that into consideration, and we could get these people back to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Next up, we have Steve Ballas, followed by Ken Harris, Mike Frizzalone, and Mimi Cowan. Steve?
We should be sending a letter to the state of Illinois saying that we wanna be withdrawn out of the region and have it based on our county alone, because the numbers for our county, like Ray said, indicate that we don't belong locked down. But I had another question I had asked for Sue, is I brought it up before, that the, if you look in history, this is the first time in history that they quarantine healthy people. And I don't get why we're doing that. When you look at the numbers of people that die compared to the population, it's this real tiny little fraction. So, yeah, I get it, that's a really, really bad disease, and older people are really in trouble if they get it, but even with the older people that get it, a lot of them are okay with it too, 'cause the majority of the people that die from this disease are my age, you know, over 60, actually over 70, and have conditions. So, we shouldn't be locking down the whole country, especially, we shouldn't lock down our own state or Will County for a disease that's only really on a very small portion of the population, and it's not, I'm seeing the numbers all the time. I read an article in the Journal of Virology, I can't say the right word, and in 2005, they came up with a statement, and that's Dr. Fossey is in that group, it's the National Institute for Health, it says hydrochloroquine is a, it's a vaccine and a cure, it's both. And that was in 2005, and then they did a VA study, and then they said it was no good, but the people in the VA were all under deathbed. France said that they use it 100% and it works. I wanna know, why aren't we getting proper information from whatever source it is? I don't know, and that's why I'm asking Sue. What the heck are we doing when we, we're saying that it works in the whole world, but our body is different than France, and France is using it all the time? So, Sue, can you answer that question?
I would guess not.
Steve, I'm sorry, I can. I'm not a MD, and I don't have a depth of knowledge on the hydroxychloroquine. I've been hearing the same thing as you have. I know that they have been using hydroxychloroquine for years for individuals with things like lupus, but it has to be closely monitored, and I understand it's not for everybody, but other than that, I, I'm not a MD, I don't have an answer for you on that.
According to the National Institute of Health in 2005, they're saying that it was a cure and a vaccine, and we would use it for SARS and the covert portion of SARS, which means COVID-19. And I'm just asking, why is it that we, you know, I can't believe anything I hear on the news, any channels, all the news is all baloney. You hear 20 different types of data. The only data that makes any sense is all this tiny number.
Steve? I appreciate your concern, but you're raising some questions that we can't answer here, so we're gonna have to leave those for those people at the national level who have that information and can manage that. Do you have a question that's local that we can manage here?
I would like to know if we could send a letter to the state of Illinois and say the same thing that Ray said, that we wanna have Will County withdrawn out of that region and give us the right to determine our own future, since our county's gonna go down the tubes in a couple of months with all the businesses closing. The cure is way worse than the disease. So, is that possible, that we put it on an agenda, that we vote on it, whether we tell the governor that we don't wanna be part of his region, that he designated us?
The other part of what Ray said was when we have the data. So, we have to have the data first to show that we don't belong in that region. Those regions were set out by IDPH. That was in the governor's address yesterday, so in order for us to be removed from anything, we have to have the data first. When we have the data and can show that we don't need to be included, we can take some further steps. Did you have another question?
Ray said we have the data, and the depth that we...
The data is... If I could add one thing, we don't have enough selected at this point.
If I could add one thing, please? This is Sue. So, part of the, part of the plan here too is that on the Restore Illinois, is that you have to meet the metric, and you have to meet the metric for a specific amount of time. So, what my suggestion would be, that, you know, we not jump the gun on anything until we reach that metric, and once we reach that metric and we have the data, then I would request that, you know, our Board of Health, the county board, and then I myself individually as the executive director of the Health Department, we could all write a letter to the governor requesting, based on the data and based on his plan of Restore Illinois and the fact that we've met the metric, that we would like consideration to move forward to the next phase.
That was exactly my point, Sue. I wanna make sure that when we compare the data to the region or to our county, if our county meets his criteria to be released, I don't see why we would not wanna send that letter. So, I think when we get that information, you'll be informing us, so I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. The other hands we have up, we have Ken, Mike, Mimi, and then Jackie. Those who have already spoken, please take your hand down.
Okay, I had a question for Sue too, that I sent through the chat, but she did answer those through her presentation, so this may switch gears a little bit. I had a question for Tim Brophy regarding the May 21st distribution date, distribution to taxing bodies. If you can just touch on that, how that's working, or will work?
Yeah, if I may, Madam Speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry, what's your question, Ken?
Yeah, but May 21st distribution date to the taxing body. I just want him to just speak on that for a minute, how it's gonna work and everything.
Ken?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, the first distribution is due May 21st. You may, I just did a quick analysis of the first couple of days, compared, the first four days of collections compared to the first four days of collections last year, and we're about 1.4 million ahead, and last year, we had collected $4.7 million by this time, and this year, we're at 6.3 million. So, receipts are coming in strong. First, the first distribution on May 21st should be healthy by all indications so far.
Good, good, thank you. Okay, Mike Frizzalone?
I have some, I have several questions, 'cause we were going kinda long there without asking any, and I had a couple of statements. First, I think this meeting is very important. All of us on the county board are getting asked questions by our constituents every day. day. What's going on with this? What's going on with that? What about this department? And we need this information, and I know a lot of it is, uh, put to us from Sue's group or from Sunny Hill, but I, I get a little upset when, for the second month in a row, the Sheriff's Department, it says, read our press briefs. I mean, why can't we just get a, a simple update? Why do we have to go and search for the press release to find out what's going in, in the Sheriff's Department? That upsets me. I don't know if it upsets anybody else, but I'm getting questions, especially when the Sheriff's Department is employed by Homer Glenn to patrol our area, and I'm gonna have to go read a press release to find out what's going on over there. Very upset with that. Secondly, um, Sue, you're talking about going for some grants for some specific things that are COVID-related. I, I honestly think that the hundred and twenty million dollars that we have, you'll be able to qualify under that umbrella for a lot of the things. I suggest, as I've, as I've suggested to our municipalities, that they start running a spreadsheet with all the things that they think may qualify, when and if we start handing out money, so that they're prepared to ask for, here's, here's what we did. Some things may be denied, but a lot of those things, I think, would be covered. Uh, you also mentioned the, uh, the mobile unit, and, uh, you know, I did make the recommendation yesterday, I think we should be contacting, or the Health Department should be contacting all of our mayors. I contacted mine and said, if you're interested in having the mobile unit out in your area, you're gonna, you need to let people know, well, I, I, or let, uh, your department know. And I think we should be calling, being proactive and calling the mayors, say, we have this available, would you be interested in having it somewhere in your village municipality? So that they can say yes, no, and, and come up with the location that would be best to service all of our municipalities. Um, I also, Sue, in regards to everything everybody is saying about when we open up, I saw the new data coming out from New York now, that it's showing that of twelve hundred people that were surveyed in the hospital, sixty-six percent of them were actually sheltering in place. And I'm wondering if we're doing any of that surveying yet, to, to find out if these people were out and about, or if they were sheltering in place, which means it doesn't matter if we're out or if we're in then, um, if it makes a difference. And then the last thing I have is a question to all of the departments, is, I know we're talking about remote working and all of that, what I really like to know is, are all the people that are remote or not in the building on a specific day, are they all working remotely? If not, is there some limitation to them working remotely? For example, if the only way they can work remotely is to have a laptop and they don't have one, I think that we need to look at getting them now, because I think that will qualify under the CARES Act monies, because anything that we have to do to allow people to work from a remote location, I believe is gonna be covered from everything I've read so far and everything NACO said to us last week on our finance call, or this week, I can't remember which day anymore. So, I really think that all the departments, if they have situations where people are at home and not performing their job because there's some limitation to them performing their job, like they don't have the equipment, or IT isn't set up to get them access to whatever, even the overtime that IT would spend getting them connected is going to be covered under that dollar amount. So, I think we need to look at all those options to see what, what's available, so that we make sure that when we start handing the money out to ourself and to municipalities, that we're covering all of our costs and we're spending the money when needed to allow us to perform our services to the mayor. I think that's all I have, thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Next up is Mimi Cowan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Um, first of all, I just wanted to, um, sort of echo Mike's comments and thank all the departments who gave, um, really full some summaries. Uh, having it presented here is really helpful for me. I get between ten to fifteen updates every day from different organizations and levels of government, and it's really hard to process it all in a logical format, so this format is incredibly helpful for me to understand and process what's going on in our county and being able to, uh, express that to my constituents. So, um, I would just again thank everyone who's done that and encourage, um, other departments to, to follow the, the lead of their, their colleagues. Um, I would also just like to continue to ask, uh, people who are presenting, um, to not use abbreviations in their presentations, um, whether we're on WebEx or normal, um, you know, I, I'm starting to finally get the hang of a lot of the abbreviations, but we have to remember that, um, the public is gonna be watching some of this too, and having even like one or two abbreviations in a presentation can really obscure people's meaning. Um, I know it's normal, um, it's our, our language that we learn, but, um, just asking everybody to remember to leave those abbreviations out. Um, secondly, um, I wanted to respond to Mr. Balas' comments about history, and I wanted to correct the historical record. Um, this is not the first time in history that, uh, healthy populations have been asked to stay at home or stay away for the sake of the whole. In fact, you can go back to the Black Plague in the middle of the thirteen hundreds, there were communities that were healthy that, uh, instructed healthy community members to stay at home and quarantine, which we're not even in quarantine, so, uh, there's that. Um, and those communities fared significantly better than the fifty percent death rate during the Black Plague, so I'd be very careful about using the phrase, this is the first time in history, because I can almost guarantee you, anytime you say that, you're gonna be wrong. Um, I had a few questions, um, along with what Ray was asking about the inclusion of Will County in the same area of Chicago, I definitely understand the concern. Um, the other, the other side of that though, I also understand that, you know, there might be a neighborhood in Chicago that says, well, our rate is just fine, can we exclude ourselves from Chicago, right? So, we have to make these areas somehow, and understanding that our, our borders are porous, um, and I fully understand looking at the data, but I'm wondering, um, Sue, you might not know the answer to this question, but if we can somehow get more information, I would like, I know that the, 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 um, areas were formed based on the EMA areas, um, but I'd like to understand if there's a little more data and understanding that goes into making those areas, such as, um, who's traveling between what area and, um, you know, that it's not just based on data, but based on some other metrics of why it would be important or unimportant to include our areas. Um, you know, I certainly think that probably there's a lot more people in my district that go into Chicago every day for work, if both areas were open or travel between the two, than say Joe, Joe and, um, Don Gould's district. So, even within the county, I think we have a, a great variation on that. But I too would like more information, and I appreciate Sue, your, um, professional opinion and how we're looking at this in a holistic sense. Um, the, um, so that's not so much a question, but if you want to respond to it, Sue, I'll, I'll be happy with that. I've also received a lot of questions from constituents about how they apply to become contract tracers, uh, or contact tracers, and, um, I'm wondering, Sue, if you have any insight on that. And finally, uh, I think some of my colleagues had questions about why the mobile testing unit, um, was not going to Sunny Hill first, um, and I wanted to give you a chance to address that as well. So, that's a couple of different things, um, that, that's what I.
Okay, um, I'd be happy to, um, talk to those points. Um, first of all, uh, the regions are, um, divided by EMS regions, not EMA regions, um, just so that you know. Um, and then also, as far as the contact tracing, I was on a webinar this morning, uh, regarding rolling that out, um, uh, they don't have everything finalized, but we should have information, uh, next week on how people can apply to do this. Um, initially, it will be volunteer. Um, it will not be a paid position, uh, during the, or I should say, after the webinar, of course, uh, you know, one of my peers, uh, asked about it being a paid position, just because there are a lot of people out of work and, um, you know, the work needs to be done, so, uh, they said that they would be looking at paying positions, um, uh, maybe next month or a few weeks down the road, but they want to get it rolled out at least, uh, on a volunteer basis first to get people trained and to get people, um, you know, started to do that. Um, what was the last thing that you said? I've, I'm sorry, the last point?
That's okay, there was a lot. Um, I saw that some of my colleagues on an email thread had questions about why the mobile testing unit wasn't going to Sunny Hill, yeah.
Yeah, so first of all, um, let me just give you a little bit of background information on how this happened. Um, a- as you know, we do have this mobile unit, and typically, it goes out for dental services, um, into the community, and then once in a while, we would take it out for medical, uh, services as well. So, IDPH and their initiative to increase testing, uh, across the, um, across the state, both at congregate care settings, that's the initiative, congregate care settings. Um, it's not just to, you know, like roll up in the middle of a parking lot and anybody can go to it. That's not the goal, and that's not what we're being asked to do, and that's not what they're providing the, the test, uh, test kits for. So, um, it's for congregate care settings or congregate sites. Um, I know that our, um, staff reached out to Sunny Hill, um, within the first couple of days, and that's just the schedule that, that came up. Uh, I, I don't know what the conversation was. I know Maggie was not part of that conversation, I was not part of that conversation, basically, our staff contacted her staff, and that was the schedule that was put out there. So, that's just all I can tell you.
Okay, thank you.
Denise, I believe the sheriff's on and would like to respond to Mike Frizzalone, and also Mary Tatro would like to give an update on the State's Attorney's Office.
Okay, thank you. So, Mike first and then Mary?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Um, to deputy, or I'm sorry, to, uh, County Board Frizzalone, the Sheriff's Office has a website, it's wilcosheriff.org. Every single change that's been made to this department since this started on March sixteenth is on that website. Um, if it's not on that website, it's not been changed. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them if you have, if you want to ask them. That's all. Or any County Board member for that mem- matter.
Well, you didn't understand what I asked then. Every other department has come and given us just a brief overview, so we're all hearing the same thing. They have websites as well, we can go on every website. All we asked was that everybody come here and just give us a brief overview, not tell us to go somewhere and read up. Sorry, thanks.
Well, you can, you can always call me, you know that. You call us for other stuff, so why not call me for that?
We can certainly call you, but, uh, the concern is not individuals, bunches of individuals calling Mike. It is if, would, it would be helpful to this group if there would be someone designated to give just an overview of what's going on in the Sheriff's Department each time that we have a committee of the whole meeting. I'm not saying it has to be you, it could be anyone from, that you designate, but it would be helpful if someone from the Sheriff's Department just did an update of exactly what's going on. Maybe that you're using all IDPH procedures in your jails or in the offices or whatever, but whatever that update is, it would be helpful if someone would be on the call and just give that information.
Thank you, Denise.
Well, if you want, why don't you tell me what you want to hear? Because there's a lot going on.
Okay.
And I could be on this phone call for two hours.
Okay.
But if you tell me what you want, you want answered, I can by all means, or one of my staff can by all means answer those questions.
Okay.
But I don't know what you want to hear.
Okay, and I understand that, Mike. So, here's what I will do. I will send you an email that gives you an overview of the kinds of things that people are reporting, so that you'll have a sense of what needs to go on. We're not looking for the nth detail of everything in the department, so that you can then send that out to all members, and then at our next committee of the whole for the updates, you can use that template as a guideline for what you would need to report to the group. Would that work for you?
Absolutely.
Thank you, I will do that.
Thank you.
I will take responsibility for that, thank you.
Denise, this is Judy, if I might jump in a second.
Okay, Judy, um, Jackie is actually next.
Okay.
Unless she wants to concede to you.
It was just regarding the, the conversation with Mike, that was all.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say also, Mike, that it would be helpful for us to hear what's going on at the jail, I haven't myself heard anything, and, um, we hear about Cook County Jail all the time. Maybe it's on the news, we don't get the same type of news out in Eastern Mo County to here, it's not covered the same way. So, how is our jail handling it? That would be good to have information on that. How are the inmates? And how is our staff there? Thank you.
Okay, I will answer both of those questions, Judy. As far as the inmates in the facility, without jinxing ourselves, you can imagine, so just assume by me not saying anything, that the inmates are fine. As for our staff in the jail, we have had four positive employees in the jail, uh, for COVID-19. Uh, two of them were correctional deputies, uh, one was a clerk, a booking clerk, and one was the, uh, correctional deputy in the court holding across the street, I mean, at the courthouse. Um, two of them, well, one just came back yesterday positive. One of them's back to work, or two of them's back to work and one's still, one's still off.
Okay, great.
And we're requiring, we're requiring all our employees that are positive to come, if they, to come back, they have to have two negative tests in a row within twenty-four hours of each other, before we let them back to work.
That's great, that's great news, Mike, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Denise?
Thank you, Mike. Jackie, I'm sorry, Jackie was next up. Who is, who is speaking?
I'm sorry, this is Sue Olenek, um, I need to go to, um, another meeting fairly soon, so are there other questions for me?
Um, of the people who have their, of the people who have their hands up, are any of them for Sue?
This is, I have a question for Sue.
All right. Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, ask about the reversal of deaths and what the process is for that. We recently had the news, uh, that two teenage, two teenage deaths were first COVID, uh, deaths, and then they were ruled as not that, but of course, there's no other information given, so people were asking questions about that. Um, if you could go through the process of how a mistake like that might happen, and then if it's the coroner who's signing off at the end, or who's making those decisions, um, then I can relay those answers to the people asking, thank you.
Um, Rachel, from what I understand, the state is making the decision on those deaths, um, they notify us when those deaths have been changed. In the case of the teenager, and, you know, we've said this to them, why don't they just, uh, put them, don't put them in, uh, don't put them in yet until it's been decided, until we get the tox back? Um, in the particular case of the, the, uh, female teenager, um, you know, there were other circumstances of the death, and I, I can't disclose that. I mean, it's, it's still protected health information, and it shouldn't be going out into the public, um, what this individual's situation was. But there was definitely something that, um, uh, played a role in whether or not it was, uh, COVID as the cause of death. And so, what the state should have done is just waited until all the tests came back and then made a determination. Um, so that was that case, I, I don't know about other cases, but they're the ones who make that decision.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Anybody else with a question for Sue before she leaves?
I, I have one, Denise, this is Judy again.
Okay.
Hi, Sue, I was just wondering. Jackie, did you have a question you want to ask Sue first? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jackie. Jackie? You having trouble with your microphone? Jackie?
Denise, it looks like Jackie is not on anymore.
You having trouble with your microphone? Jackie?
Denise, it looks like Jackie is not on anymore.
Okay.
I don't know if it happened that she lost connection.
Judy, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Sue, um, about the Moni Health Department. How is that operating? Um, because I've gone there and, you know, the doors have been closed, but of course could be because there wasn't an appointment. But if you could clarify that for me?
Sure, Judy. Um, the doors will be open to the public, uh, and we'll have staff back there as of May 26th. Um, uh, the behavioral health, uh, out of that office, we, we don't have much behavioral health services. We do have one counselor who goes out there, um, uh, for two days a week. Um, and he will resume that. Uh, the community health center will, uh, resume to some extent the, um, medical services out there. Um, and then of course their sanitarians will be out there as well. Um, but like I said, not till May 26th.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Julie Berkowitz, is, is your question for Sue? Any last questions for Sue before she leaves? Okay. Last question for Sue before she leaves the call. Thank you, Sue.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. Be well.
Thank you. Julie, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And, uh, good day to everybody. Hope you're all, your families are all healthy. Thank you to all the department heads for their, um, updates today. I have a question regarding, there's a lot of talk in the community about the individuals that have been, uh, released from the prisons. Um, and apparently somebody sent me an article about, um, someone who was released, I believe it was Grundy County, and then entered Will County, committed another crime and, um, apparently is, is positive for the virus. And I, I guess he's going back to jail. So I, I assume this concern will go to the attention, to Mike's attention, uh, our community members. Do we know who the people are that are being released? And I, I, I believe that our neighbors would like to be informed when that's happened. So could you give a?
Can the Sheriff's Department speak to that question about when people are released? Uh, and I'm assuming, Julie, these are not people who are registered offenders. These are just other people out. Is that correct?
Whether they're registered offenders, anybody who's released back into the public, pardon me, um, uh, apparently that you hear on the news that they're catching people that have been released and, and then they're committing more crime. And those are the concerns that a lot of people are inquiring about. They are uncomfortable with the fact that we don't know what's happening. Um, we don't know they're in our communities. And then if they commit another crime and get caught, in, in this particular case, apparently this individual is, um, positive with the virus. And, and now I guess he may be going back to jail. But, but I'd appreciate some input regarding that. Thank you.
You want me to try to answer that, Denise?
Yeah. I, I recognize, Mike, that there are a couple of different things there because registered offenders is different than other people being released. I recognize that other people being released are free to go about their lives as they see fit. And that, I don't believe she's speaking to the issue of recidivism. She is, I'm guessing, speaking just to the fact that if someone is released and tests positive, what are, what remedies are there? Is that correct, Julie?
Yes. Thank you, Denise.
Well, let me just touch on a couple of things here. In this, we don't have any control over who the Illinois Department of Corrections releases. And we don't, they don't notify us to let us know that they're releasing people as well. Um, so all I can do is control, which we've been doing with the, with the State's Attorney's Office, the Public Defender's Office, and, uh, private attorneys, um, to, we had released some people from our facility. They got back up in front of judges. Bonds were reduced. Bonds were, or, you know, they were let out on, you know, because they had some time. Uh, you know, these are nonviolent offenders, of course. It was all done as a group effort between all, every, all the players involved there. Um, as far as the, uh, I've, we've not been notified of someone who was released from the Department of Corrections and was rearrested and is positive and is coming to our Will County Jail. That's not happened as of today, right now, this minute. Um, because if they know, if someone brings someone in our custody to our facility and they know they're positive for COVID, they are, well, told to tell us immediately. So our medical staff can, um, do their protocol. So I've not heard that and that person has not showed up at the county, uh, with the Will County Jail as of right now. So I hope that kind of answers your question. Uh, so, does it, Julie?
Thank you. It, it kind of does. I, I think that, um, one thing that's clear is you're, you're, um, confirming that we have no idea who's being released. Um, and municipalities in Will County, they don't reach out and notify the, um, the county, obviously. And, and so for that reason, it's, uh, unless these people are caught committing another crime, we really don't know if they're out there in the public.
Correct. You can assume that they were released from the Department of Corrections, that they're out in the public.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mike. I see a number of hands up and they seem to be the same hands that were there before. Are hands up for new questions? Or are the people just not, oh, thank you? Okay.
I do have a new question, Denise. This is Judy again.
Go ahead.
So there are a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. I didn't even know if there's an answer today, but kind of like just the topic of discussion. As far as the maintenance staff, you know, I know, my dad's at Sunny Hill, so I know that there are some cases at Sunny Hill. Um, I just want to verify that staff at Sunny Hill do not cross with the Health Department. And the reason for that is, um, of course, the Health Department has, would be having people, once they're open again, to the public, would be having people coming and going. And then we don't know whether they would test positive or not. And then if they came and crossed into the Sunny Hills, into Sunny Hill and began working, there could be a problem with that. So I'm wondering, and I know we have consolidated maintenance, but I would like to suggest that we look at, looking into which is the best course of action as far as our maintenance staff. Should our maintenance staff be specific to only the Health Department and not go out there? Or just specific to Sunny Hill and not go out of there? I, I realize that there could be a staffing issue, but I think it would be worth it if we had another one or two people that we'd have to maybe look at hiring so that we don't have to worry about any kind of cross-contamination outside the department. Either one, they're both high-risk departments. You know, our residents are at high risk of getting the, of getting the virus and therefore possibly dying from it. And then the Health Department has, you know, different people coming in every day who could or could not have it. So I'd kind of like to throw that out there. I don't know if we have an answer today and if we don't, that's okay. And then just one more thing that I kind of wanted to ask also, and this is related to, we haven't had an IT update from Mike Shea simply because of COVID. So maybe if we could incorporate that maybe into an executive committee meeting at some times, Denise, that would be great.
Okay. And we certainly can include Mike Shea. I believe he is on the call now, Mike?
I, I am on the call. I could give an update of where we're at.
Thank you.
Uh, so, oh, no worries. So, uh, first of all, the GIS staff continue to maintain, uh, the COVID-19, uh, website and those resources, including updates to food resources, domestic violence. And now we're working on, uh, updating opioid, uh, resource information. Uh, we're also looking to see if we can build a dashboard that would compare the county metrics to the, uh, standards from the governor's office, where we could kind of measure where we're at. Uh, we're seeing if we can, if we can build a tool like that through GIS. Uh, as far as the other projects go, uh, you know, the courthouse, uh, project is on schedule. I have a huge, uh, stack of, uh, in my data center, uh, ready to start installation probably next week, uh, of the network and, and the primary infrastructure within the courthouse.
You promise you're gonna do that?
ERP is, uh, continues to be, uh, worked on. There is some delay, uh, going on in the ERP because the finance staff and, and others involved in that project are engaged in handling a number of other issues such as, uh, while dealing with COVID money, doing projections for losses, et cetera. Uh, but we're trying to get a good measure of that. I actually have a meeting tomorrow, uh, with the project coordinator on that. The Kronos project, uh, for payroll is underway. Uh, the, actually the time clocks and, and equipment, uh, for that have already been delivered. And, uh, HR is, is fully engaged in that project as well. Uh, then we have, I'm trying to think of all the projects we've got going on. Uh, ERP finance, uh, case management, case management for the State's Attorney. Uh, they've been using it, uh, for quite some time now, uh, with very positive effect. Uh, they're, they're fully engaged in that. Uh, we're working on some coordination issues, uh, between them and, and Public Defender. I think we're actually meeting this afternoon, uh, about that. Uh, my staff, uh, particularly in a, you know, to give out a couple of shout outs in particular. Well, A, all of my staff have been working and we're trying to be as, uh, responsive to people's, to the departments and people's needs, uh, to get equipment, to get access, to get, uh, meetings, to, to, to whatever they need, uh, to accomplish their goals. I think we're having quite a bit of success in that. Uh, Mike Kluga, Jason Donish, uh, Tim Farrell, Janet Kalbfleisch, I mean, all my staff have really been, really been out there. Uh, we are, just so everybody's aware, I mean, we are probably 95%, uh, work from home, but we were already prepared to work remotely. And we have 32 facilities spread over a thousand square miles. We don't like to drive, you know, spend half our time there anyways. So we were kind of ready, uh, to do that work remotely. Uh, does that, does that answer your question, Judy? Was there anything else in particular you wanted an update on?
Well, I think that's really good. I was just wondering with, uh, case management, how Public Defender, are they working on that now? Or how's that going?
So the, the issue, the issue there is, um, that the Public Defender, they are operating in the system. They're working within the system. Uh, but they're not getting the data feeds, uh, that they, that I think we all anticipated they would. So we're working through that. It's just some growing pains, uh, as we make this move. So, but we are aware that there's an issue and we'll be working to address it.
Okay. And when you have meetings, Mike, like that, I would not mind being included in those meetings. If, you know, you wanted to, you could text me and then I could, if you guys do WebEx, I'm not sure what you do. I would like to stay aware, um, up to date on those projects. That would be great. And then obviously, once we come back, uh, I know that there was interest in seeing, seeing the projects, um, as a committee hold. We'll, we'll of course look towards doing that, but that would be definitely down the line in the future. So, uh, thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
No, no good. No, all good.
Okay. And, and Maggie, thank you, Mike. Um, Julie, uh, Judy rather, to your other question about the, about Sunny Hill. Maggie is not able to be on the call right now, but what I will do is ask her to share with all of us, uh, a write-up about what measures she's taking to ensure that there is no cross-contamination or spread of, uh, COVID-19 at the Sunny Hill Nursing Home. So we'll put that out in, uh, in email to everyone. Okay. We are, uh, at public comments. Is there anyone online from the public who had a question or a comment?
Denise, Mary Tetro just wanted to let you know that she's available if anyone has any questions. But she doesn't need to give an update.
Okay. Any public comments? Thank you, Moore. No public comments. I didn't see anything from the public in the chat. I don't have any. We have not received any emails either, Denise. Okay. Good enough. Thank you. I do not have any reporter announcements. I just will say, as you probably have guessed, I'm at the office. We are all being careful here in the hallways, elevators, whatever. We are wearing our masks and gloves, making sure that we are not responsible for spreading anything. Uh, we don't need an executive session.
Denise, Tom Weigle on their other, uh, other business?
Yes.
Uh, I got an email from a resident concerned about leaf burning. Uh, he's asked to be indoors and with the COVID, uh, uh, thing going on. And he was wondering if we could maybe get into that again about some more restrictions, uh, on leaf burning. Right now, our present leaf burning is like 50 feet from the neighbor's, uh, dwelling unit. And he's suggesting like maybe two to five acre property would be allowed to burn. And I'm just wondering if any county board members would be interested in doing some other changes in that regard. Uh, if they could, uh, email any suggestions that they have to Beth Adams. And, uh, this resident, uh, email will be, she was gonna send that out to everyone. So you can look at that. If you have any, uh, comments that you would like to see some changes or no changes. And then we could forward that to the Health Committee who normally would, uh, handle this situation.
That's right. Thank you, Tom. And yes, we, I did see your email and Beth has arranged to send it out. And Mary Tetro has already weighed in on what can or can't be done there. So if others, as Tom said, have any comments, concerns about that, please send those over so that we can put those together and put them on the Health Committee agenda. Anything else for new business? Okay. We don't need an executive session. If there's no other business, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. I oppose.
Thank you all for being on the call. We will talk to you on, uh, next Tuesday. Stay well.